We will now open the meeting for Thursday, July 20th, 2017. Gary Bowden.
Here.
Frank Ferrari. Marshall Goff.
Here.
Ryan Kennedy.
Here.
Chad Signet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martha Jeff.
Here.
Mayor Pauline.
Here.
This evening we have our prayer and pledge by Councilmember Signet.
Please bow to me and join me in the worship prayer. Our Father.
Who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation. But deliver us from evil. The gospel is here. The power and glory of the Lord shall be revealed. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation this evening by former mayor and councilmember Jim Hunt.
Madam Mayor, congratulations on another term historic. To former Chief Marshall Goff, congratulations. And Ryan, for elected Jimmy. And congratulations to all of you. The, as, and some of you may, well, Marshall, you may know this, but for the last almost twenty years now, I've been, and I used to do it out of my council pay, and now I'm doing it out of the sales of The Amazing City. Of course, those sales are dedicated to the scholarship. But in 1999, I started a scholarship to recognize children of employees in the city. One of the reasons that I did it back then was, and I did it in honor of my father, who was a longtime employee in the Public Works Department. And I've told this story before, and Margaret's heard it probably twenty times, or nineteen times anyway. But when I was a young man, a son of a city employee, not overly well-paid, working in the Public Works Department, going to college wasn't for sure, it was a question mark. And I had access, student loans, got some scholarships and grants. But one of the ones that really touched me the most was the Clarksburg Women's Club. And they awarded a scholarship to a person in the community, and I happened to be that person back in 1968. And I thought back then, when I headed to WVU, that money came in so handy because it wasn't restricted to anything, and it was, you know, books, and sometimes you forget certain things and that, so it was like a little extra money that made a big difference on my education, and I never forgot what the Clarksburg Women's Club did for me. And I, so when I decided to do it in honor of my father, I will tell you the truth, I had no clue, much like many journeys, that I would be here nineteen years later, still awarding this scholarship. And the one part of it that is, that I think the entire council knows this, anyone that interacts with city employees recognizes that that's a special group of people in our community. When they go out and put their lives on the line for, for our citizens, in a lot of cases, their kids are at home on Christmas Day when they're out on shift work in the police and fire and public works and removal and snow and so forth. When there's, everyone else is having a good time at some activity, they're actually putting out the, you know, the road controls and all of the things that, all of these events, Italian Festival, road races, the different, the Clarksburg 10K, without city employees, these events could not take place. And that's very seldom ever recognized as the contribution that people makes with their tax dollars. And these public servants, let alone that they're doing drug, you know, enforcement and so forth, but they're doing all of the things that makes this community amazing. And tonight, and I always, one thing, I require that an essay be written in order to, for, to get the scholarship. And the essays would just touch your heart because our employees' children, they get, they are living a life that they realize public service and community service is a part of their life, and it's interesting to me that our awardee tonight, and the two other applicants who applied for the scholarship, all have outstanding records in the community. And I think that's a credit to the city and to the city employees in all departments. Now, you might imagine too, after nineteen years, the scholarship has been awarded in virtually every department in the city. We have, and Net's daughter was recipient, the ones, John Walker's son was a recipient, Johnny Workman at Public Works was a recipient, Frank Sparchell's daughter was a recipient. I mean, it's just gone throughout, and every one of these kids are a credit to this community, and I'm just so proud just to be able to recognize them and let them, and help them a little bit, but also give them recognition. And tonight, Jessalyn Cook is the awardee, and Jessalyn, if you'll come up. And when I was reading about Jessalyn, you know, it's kind of, if you'd say, should a person be a good community person? She already is, I mean, she makes a lot of us look like pikers with it, because she's done some fantastic work. But Jessalyn, tonight, most important, we'll put the check there, but I have the certificate. And it reads, "Amazing Cities," this certifies that Jessalyn Cook is awarded the 2017 Rex B. Hunt Scholarship. This scholarship is awarded by Amazing Cities in honor of Rex B. Hunt, a city of Clarksburg employee who made higher education a priority for his children, given on July 20th, 2017, by Jim Hunt. All right, and I'm going to ask you to say a few words, if you would, and tell the council and the folks here a little bit about what you've done and why college is going to be important to you.
Oh, I'm Jessalyn, I usually go by Jessie, and my dad is a police officer here in Clarksburg. So, I just graduated from Robert C. Bird, and I'm planning on going to Fairmont State University to go into elementary education, because I believe that teaching kids at such a young age is important to know their worth. And, well.
Tell them about your volunteer work in the community, that was very impressive.
I've done volunteer work with SAD, Student Council, Junior Hermene Society, and I was treasurer for Junior Hermene Society, two years. And, two years of high school, I was on the Lanes Flagline, and that's about it.
That's enough. I signed a copy of The Amazing City for you, and it's inscribed, "Always be amazing," and you certainly are. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. And let me also recognize the other two employees' children that applied, and they were excellent too. SAD, I mean, I hope I sell a lot of books this year, I truly do, because I'd love to have awarded a scholarship to all three. But Lexi Eckel, her father works in Public Works, Mike Eckel, and Haley M. Shepherd, and her father is Bill Swacker, also a police officer, so attended Robert C. Bird. But I appreciate the opportunity to come up once a year, and if you get a chance, tell people about the book so that we can fund these scholarships. But thanks very much, and it's an honor to be here, thanks.
Well, Jim, thank you for carrying on a tradition for nineteen years, I mean, that's great that you give back to the community. And Jessie, congratulations, I'm sure your mom and dad are very proud of you.
Great.
Thank you. Pardon the minutes of the regular session of July 6th, 2017?
Showroom, seven.
If there are no objections, a motion carries.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings, if you could please limit your comments to three minutes. Like Mike Lambie on 555 East Main Street wishes to address council concerning amendments to the city charter.
Good evening, and as Mr. Hunt said, I'd like to congratulate the newly-elected members to council. What I'm proposing is three amendments to, or changes to our city charter. You know, and one of those amendments would be a return to the ward system that we had in 1957, which replaced our current landlord system. I'm proposing that we create, you know, six equally divided sessions, or sections throughout the city. For thirty-two years, I lived in an area that had a ward system, and it was very, very effective and very, very representative. I know many of you in council have said, "Well, I represent all of the citizens of Clarksburg." But I wonder, how many of you have actually gone out into other areas and asked the citizens what they think about that? I'm quite well aware of all the historical problems, you know, and controversies about ward systems, but I think the benefits far outweigh those. Number one, a ward system creates geographic diversity, you know, among, around the city. Each community has a voice with the ward system. As I was preparing this presentation, I drove around the city, and I recognized, or I'd written down thirteen different neighborhoods that I drove through, you know, and I was gonna say, three of those, only three of those thirteen are represented, sitting up here, but with Mr. Ferrari absent, only two actually, you know, are representative, you know, of those thirteen. And I live in the Gulf Plaza area, and I see councilmembers walking the streets. I know who my councilmembers are, I see them walking the streets, picking up trash at the times, I see them walking their dogs, I see them running or jogging in the neighborhood, and I see them packing their cars in and out of the garages. I know my councilmembers. And actually, I'm not a very good golfer, as some of you know very, very well, but I could go out and take, in my front yard, I could take a seven iron and hit three houses of my councilmembers, you know, and I could take a five wood, or I could take a driver and a three wood and probably dribble one past, past the mayor's house. That's just the one neighborhood. I could go over to Staley with a five wood and probably do the same thing, but you have all the other neighborhoods.
Mike, I need to let you know you have thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds left, okay. You know, and, okay, I'll do it very, very quickly then, I practiced this in three minutes, but with, with that, the, as far as the ward system, it just creates a much fairer system throughout, you know, throughout, for the voters, you know. Also, it'll certainly be less candidate spending, campaign spending. The second issue I would like to bring up would be a direct election of the mayor. No disrespect to our current mayor, but I think there's inherently something wrong when four people, theoretically, four people could decide who's gonna represent, you know, represent Clarksburg throughout the city, the county, the state, and also throughout, you know, throughout the nation. My third issue, or third amendment to the charter, would be term limits. We all know, again, the advantages and disadvantages of term limits. One main thing, it prevents, it prevents the consolidation of power between one, with one person or one group of people. I know Chestnut recently voted no for term limits. It was the councilmembers that voted no, the person for term limits. There was one positive vote for it, but I would like to see our council take these issues, discuss them, debate them. If nothing else, in the upcoming elections or next ballot, let the citizens decide on whether they want a ward system, whether they want direct election of the mayor, or whether they want term limits.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Margaret Bailey, 531 Milford Street wishes to address council with a comment and an idea.
Good evening, again, I'd like to also congratulate all of you, and Madam Mayor, the women just keep making history in this city, and you go, girl, I'm so proud. We hold our own in our private. I want to make a comment, and one of it is that I appreciate so much the decision, the planning and zoning made for the request for the abandonment of the property over, on the end of Alexander down through the, through the Hartland area. I would like to just tell you all that this had happened once before, this request had come before council once before, and it again, at that time, was denied. And I distinctly remember the reason it was denied was that code enforcement and the people who are involved with evaluating the hillside there decided that the hillside was not stable enough to undergo any kind of digging or changes. We have houses there that could be involved, and I hope that this will be kept in mind for the future, should this come up again, that that is not a really good area, as has been designated in the past by our code enforcement. The second thing is, I'd like to bring up, and I'll talk faster, that when I was running for council, one idea kept coming to me from various parts of the city and from our businesses throughout the city. And I would propose to you all, that you think about this, I'm not, I'm putting this out as an idea. I don't know of any other cities around here who have done anything like this. Our city manager has done a fantastic job. Our assistant city manager has done a fantastic job. Our mayor, Uptown Clarksburg. But I am challenging you all, us, that we might look at having an uptown business summit, where we would invite the businesses and the property owners to meet with us here at City Hall and talk about our common goals. What kinds of things do the businesses and the property owners feel that they could, they want us to do, and vice versa? What do we feel that property owners and businesses should do to try to encourage further development? The last thing, Emily Drive, and this is something our city manager heard from me many times in the past. Folks, Emily Drive is continually going through changes. You know, I think we're losing a car dealership there. We need to continue to increase our traffic. Please evaluate what we can do to make it more visibly appealing. Even the flags that have been there in the past need to be replaced. I need to stop because my timeline is up, but remember that little things matter, and the little things that you can do to make things look better on Emily Drive and in the downtown area will bring us dividends. Thank you.
Margaret, real quick, I want to let you know, I did, just recently had a meeting with the business owners in downtown, didn't include the property owners, we.
Good.
Get all the small businesses together, so we're heading in that direction, just so.
Yay, that, that is great news, because, you know, I don't know of another city that I've read about that has done this kind of thing, and having this kind of an open agenda with the city council and all of the downtown area, property owners and so forth, is something that will be, make it quite visible to the public that we do care and that we're working on this. Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation by Piper Jaffray Company and its city manager.
Well, again, Joe from Piper Jaffray was very essential through the bond anticipation notice, as well as Tom Amane with Steptoe and Johnson, and we greatly appreciate everything they've done for us, but also we wanted to show the appreciation to council for everything to move the Robinson Graham Project forward. So tonight, through Piper Jaffray, we had an opportunity to present to you guys something tonight to commemorate the Robinson Graham Project and the bond anticipation notes, and just to show our appreciation of Piper and also the staff, so we greatly appreciate that. And just to show you what it looked like, this is what the, if the desk, it's crystal, is what it's called? So, it would sit on your desk, and it's engraved with the Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center's city seal, Piper Jaffray's name, and also the dollar amount of the bond anticipation note that was provided to get the project forward. So, again, to show the appreciation from Piper Jaffray and the staff and the city, we'll present these to you, for mayor.
Thank you.
And yours. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
And then, we did not forget about the other councilmembers as well, that, they're not here receiving, but everybody is getting one, so. And Net, we also appreciate your help as well for the bond closings as well. Your stamp is very important, and we don't, and we definitely recognize that, so thank you for all your help as well. And then Bob Kaplan, you would not be remiss, we did not forget you as well, we really appreciate everything you've done as well, we'll make sure you receive yours as well. But again, thank you, I think this project's been performed very well. Today, we had a great announcement for the executive director as well, coming on board, so things are moving along, construction's moving along, and again, thanks, Paul and Piper Jaffray for stepping up and helping us through the process as well. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. City managers report an update.
Chestnut Street Project, the pre-construction meeting will be held tomorrow, Friday, July 21st, at 10:00 a.m. out of the DOH District 4 office, and the completion is scheduled for late September for this project. So, we're very anxious to get the project moving and get it completed and the roadway open. 2017 paving program, the notice of award, the bonds and insurance were all turned in, as well as the signing of the contract is on Monday, July 17th, and we do anticipate the milling, paving to begin this coming Monday, July 24th, so that project as well will be moving very quickly and rapidly. They do want to get out of here prior to the Italian Festival beginning, so they should be completed by late August. Demolition, the URA previously approved the term sheet with the MVB Bank, and that's in the amount of $400,000. The ordinance is on the agenda, as well as approving the agreement to authorize myself to execute that agreement with the URA. I recommend that be done, contingent upon the URA's approval of the agreement and the finalized loan documents from MVB Bank, which we're still finalizing. Once those are completed, we'll come back for a second reading in late August. Once those are approved, we can close on the loan, and then we'll proceed forward with the bidding of the demolitions, hopefully in later this fall. Also, just wanted to bring to your attention, just as of today, just was notified late today, with Schaefer and Associates with the federal bankruptcy court, the court granted our motion to lift the stay, so we're also scheduled to have a court hearing in willing on Monday, July 24th, for Schaefer's motion for a preliminary injunction. But by lifting the stay, the court has determined that it would not prevent the city from enforcing the demolition order, so we will be able to move forward with that pending the outcome, if, if the hearing is still held on Monday, which we are doubtful that it would proceed forward on Monday, since it constitutionally allows us to go ahead and proceed with the demolition. So, what I handed out is the actual rolling from the US Bankruptcy Court for the Northern District. Ryan, I would like to have a copy, so you don't have to ask him. The audit committee, we've solicited the auditing services for fiscal years 2016, '17, as well as for '17, '18, and I recommend the committee to consist of the mayor, vice mayor, finance director, assistant finance director, and myself, and then we will come back with a recommendation to council as who we should retain for the auditing services for those two fiscal years. Economic development, again, the executive director, we did release that today to the media per press release, but Ryan Tolly has been named the executive director for the Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center. His first day will begin Monday, July 31st, we've already provided him with a plethora of information to move forward prior to him hitting the ground running as he's coming in. So, again, he comes with a background, he actually majored in marketing himself, attended Full Sail University, he has a background in this type of industry. He worked at the Breakers Palm Beach, which is a five-diamond luxury resort in Palm Beach, Florida. So, he's come with a lot of expertise on these types of venues, so we're very anxious to get him on board, to begin that process, scheduling events for next year, and executing the business plan to move forward. There were a total of approximately thirty-five to forty applicants that applied for the position, which did include about ten from Harrison County. Also under Robinson Graham, the new market tax credits, we are getting very close to closing. We anticipate the closing on or before August 15th, and as of right now, we're currently estimating approximately six to seven million dollars, and that's equity, that is cash influx of money that will decrease the amount of the bond anticipation notes and/or the USDA funding that will be necessary to take out the bands once those expire. So, this is great news as we're moving forward, and as this number is defined, more importantly, and towards the closing, then we'll have a press conference on that, fully explain the new market tax credit process, and what that means to the citizens financially, and also to the city as well. So, this is very great news to move this project forward as well.
I would like to say something, that would not be possible without your due diligence and hard work and the assistant city manager, because I know you guys have been working on that, you know, feverishly for the last six months, so thank you for getting that comment. Thank you. Thank you.
Construction update, the masonry restoration and cleaning and the repointing will continue over the next three months on the exterior of the Robinson Graham, the basement floors and orchestra pit have been poured, and the flooring, and the former Liberty Tax Building has been completely removed to date. And then there's a grade beam installation in the west addition, that's approximately eighty, eighty percent completed, as well as the backfill in that west, western addition of the basement, is approximately eighty percent completed as well. So, they are moving along very nicely, the contractor's doing a great job. Under the police, retirements, we have two, one Sergeant Mike Kidding, he'll be retiring effective Monday, July 31st, and he has served the city as a police officer for twenty-two years and four months. So, we'll be putting a nice article out on him on our social media sites, accommodating him and showing our appreciation for his service to the city for those twenty-two years. In addition, our canine, which is Quincy Vonner Delwinger Grinns, will be retiring as well. He's now nine years old, and he's been in service since June of 2010, so he'll be out, he's effectively out of service now. New officers, we do have four new officers graduate tomorrow, so we'll be welcoming them back to the police force. Once they become back, they'll be going to the FTO program, we'd be grading them, and then hopefully all four retained moving forward as new officers. National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 1st, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the VA Park Splash Zone. And the Clarksburg Police Department is in dire need of volunteers, so if any councilmembers are available or anybody in the public who want to lend a hand for the community, just be active in the community. Again, we're requesting for volunteers to assist, it's very large turnout for National Night Out, and we can use all the assistance possible for that night.
If I can elaborate on that, Lieutenant asked me to, I was gonna make another council comment, but since you're talking about it, anybody that needs to, or wants to volunteer, we need to be there at 5:00. So, hopefully, we can get a few volunteers, and maybe the mayor's youth council as well.
I sent out a letter to them, of course, we don't have a youth council right now, but I did send a letter to all of them asking if they wanted to and to let us know.
And you said 5:00?
Yes.
For us, volunteers?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, under the events, the Harrison County YMCA 10th Annual 5K will be Saturday, this Saturday, July 22nd, and that'll begin at 7:30 a.m., therefore, the 5K route will be closed, there will be detours in effect shortly thereof, and that should conclude fairly quickly so we can get the roads open.
Is that downtown?
That's downtown, yeah, the 5K route.
How long do you think they'll be closed?
Two hours. The Mountaineer Food Bank Mobile Distribution will be Saturday, August 5th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. to noon, and that's be held at Jackson Square. And then Jesus Fest is Friday, August 11th through Sunday, August 13th, and that'll also be at Jackson Square. That completes the matter.
Thank you. Unfinished business, consideration of recommendation of Planning and zoning commission. Unfinished business, consideration of recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the petition filed by Deborah Hardy requesting the abandonment of an unopened, unapproved alley located on or near South Alexander Avenue.
So moved, second.
You need to state.
You need to state to accept or deny a recommendation of.
Uh, I recommend that we, we, uh, we go with the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the petition filed by Deborah Hardy.
Yes. Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
New business, consideration of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the manager of the city of Clarksville to execute an agreement with the Clarksville Urban Renewal Authority contingent of the URA approving the same.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the city council, the city of Clarksville authorizing application of grant funds to the West Virginia Department of Transportation, West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles, for 2018 Highway Safety Grant in the amount of $473,800.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution to approve revision to the city budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of a letter of support regarding North Center West Virginia Airport's endorsement of SkyWest Airlines Air Service proposal.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of appointment of the Audit Procurement Committee.
So moved, second.
And those would be the individuals noted in the city manager's report.
You'll be named.
The mayor, the vice mayor, the finance director, assistant finance director, and city manager.
I'm sorry, did I need to include that, or did you just do that for me?
I just did that one.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I would like to move that, uh, we nominate, um, Stephen.
Daniel.
Daniel Rogers. Uh, with all due respect to, um, our former council member and mayor who also, um, uh, applied for that position, um, I, I know she already serves on a, on a, a commission, and I, I don't wanna forgo the opportunity, quite frankly, to, to nominate, uh, someone who would be too new, new to our boards and commissions, that represents a downtown business, is a downtown entrepreneur, and, uh, with that being said, nominate Daniel Rogers for the BZA open position.
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of canceling the August 3, 2017 regular council meeting.
So moved, second.
Just so everyone knows, the reason for the cancellation is, uh, due to the West Virginia Municipal League. It's their annual conference, and, and some members of council serve on the board, so it's imperative that we, uh, go with that event, so, um. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Council comments?
I'd like to also thank Kim, I know you played a, a big part in, um, the, so, thank you. I, real quick, we received a card that was addressed to the city manager and mayor and city council. "Thank you for the salary increase, it's very much appreciated." Janie Watson. So I thought that you all should know that it didn't go unnoticed, but I, I know several employees have contacted us individually, so, um, with that being said, I know, Jim, you're in, you have another commitment, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay.
I have just the National Night Out, August 1st.
Right.
You know, be there at 5:00, it's a lot of fun. I've been there the last four years, and had a blast. Thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of comments. I don't know if anyone's been able to see the first privately funded mural on, uh, South Chestnut Pike, it's a, for an artist, Chris Schultz, uh, a lot of individuals from a GoFundMe account created this, or raised around $1,200. So, um, it's looking really good, so if you have a chance, uh, to brighten up the community, my wife and I run it nice, we drive by, walk by, it makes it enjoyable, and I've been, uh, the mayor was, and the city manager, and, um, assistant city manager were nice enough to, uh, invite me to one of the meetings, and I'm really excited about what you've all been planning for, uh, the past, and the next one will be on the, is it okay to say word?
Please.
Sure. On the huge building, um, and I was talking on the, on the back, so you'll be able to see on Route 50. So hopefully, it'll be a ripple effect. I must have been talking to, uh, some, um, business owners to try to get another privately funded, 'cause, you know, it's, it's, the public seems, even on some of the negative, uh, um, city council website things, I see nothing but positivity, so that's a, a great thing to see. Uh, and I think people are excited about it, and I've only heard, like, maybe one complaint, and, you know, could see the source on that one, but, uh, um, the other thing is, uh, I just wanna say I'm excited about being a part of Healthy Harrison. It's a great thing that, uh, that they're going with the city. I think, how many of us work for us on council or being part of that? Uh, but they put a big investment in that. Again, uh, by seeing all the positive and great things, uh, in the city, uh, beautiful, running through Jackson Square, outrun all the way through Miley, you said, uh, Michael through Staley, all the way up through the city, so I see a lot of the, uh, different, uh, neighborhoods, and, uh, be able to see what's going on, and, but one area that, uh, I would like to see, and then I talked to the manager about, and I'm gonna call him myself, is, you know, I don't know, on, uh, Milford Street, there's a, almost, is, uh, this is where, uh, a main drag, it's, it's not the city's problem, but it's the, uh, energy. There's no lights, and, uh, that's, uh, on Milford, right there, all you see is black, so hopefully, that's something, uh, that we can get taken care of quickly. Um, and the last thing, uh, I, I wanna say is, uh, I just wanna, um, the last meeting here, I think it congratulated the mayor, uh, well, I congratulated all the new council members, and then I forgot about Jimmy completely altogether, but, you know, being, uh, the mayor again, and also Jimmy, and being, uh, the vice mayor as well.
Thank you.
Here.
I just want to express appreciation and good luck, and thanks to those who helped bring about fulfilling the, uh, executive director's position at the Performing Arts Center. Um, I, I think it's a, it's a critical appointment. This city, uh, has a huge investment, uh, in that Performing Arts Center, and the hope is still, I'll look to our city manager, spring, late spring, middle spring.
Spring of 2018.
By, by, by middle of next year, we'll have some kind of an opening, and, and I think it's critical that we get somebody on board right now if we're gonna start, uh, having performances in our Performing Arts Center, so I, I'm grateful for that. And then I, I also want to applaud, um, our city manager and assistant city manager. I know when we first talked about some of these sources where we might get some funding to help underwrite the cost of the Performing Arts Center, um, our city manager, I don't, I think maybe privately, privately to me and, and, and a group gathering of us, uh, explained how challenging, difficult, and complicated, I think that probably all describes it, doesn't, uh, Clarksville? New market tax credits were. I didn't even wanna begin to try to understand how you go about applying for them, and, and to think that we're gonna, uh, be reimbursed in whatever complicated fashion that occurs, six to seven million dollars, i- is just outstanding work. I mean, that's one-third of the cost of the project, uh, in, in a process that was described to me as just being extremely difficult to qualify for, so I, my hats off to, uh, to Anthony and, and to Martin. I, I think that's just a fabulous, tremendous accomplishment, and.
Kim was also part of that.
I'm sorry. Kim, yes, and, and Kim and all others, but, yeah, thank you, wonderful work. Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, have a couple of things here. I, I wanna, uh, thank Jason Deputy Chief, uh, I know there's a lot of work in that National Night Out, I've been there and done that, and, uh, I don't think that a lot of people know the amount of work and the time that it takes our department to, uh, to complete that and to bring it off as, as well as you all have for the past year, so, uh, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And also, uh, retirement, Sergeant Mike Kitty, uh, and our canine Quincy, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's special when somebody gets over the 20-year mark and, uh, they can retire and move on to, uh, to other things, and, and I just wanna congratulate them and, uh, say good luck to them.
Right.
First of all, I'd, I'd like, really like to thank, um, uh, everyone that's going to be volunteering, uh, at National Night Out. I go there, uh, every year, I forget how many years it's been, well, I've been there now, it's been a lot, uh, with my wife and kids, and they always have a great time, and it's a great event, and I, and, so thank you to the Clarksville Police Department for putting it on, but also, I will be one of the volunteers there, uh, helping out this year, and I look forward to that. I'm also gonna be volunteering at the upcoming YMCA 5K this Saturday. Um, I'm told I'm gonna be one of the people that hopefully will stop cars from careening into the, uh, into the thing, so hopefully, uh, I will survive that. Um, and, uh, I'm also one of the members of council that's, uh, part of Healthy Harrison, so I want, I'm excited about starting that process, where the city workers, including ourself, are gonna get healthier. And, um, and also, uh, I, I go to Jesus Fest every year, so I'm looking forward to that. And the very last thing I'll say is that I'd like to thank Mike Lambiott for coming and for his presentation. As this council knows, I've, I've supported, uh, all three of the things he talked about for several years now, and I'd like to request, next time we have a work session, that that be placed on the agenda so we can discuss further with members of council that have not been on council since the last time we discussed it. That's all I have.
Congratulations to your.
So moved, second.
Thank you, John.